Can you hear me?
Yes.
His name is not on the agenda.
Huh?
It is not on the agenda that he can participate.
The Texas Open Meetings Act allows him to participate in a quorum.
Have a quorum, but it's got to be on the agenda that he's going to be attending virtually.
That's not true. So it's, the, the rule would be that if, if you didn't have a quorum in place, but you have a quorum in place, there's no extra quorum.
You've got to have a quorum in place for there to be a virtual meeting.
Where's your quorum?
I know. Last time we didn't, he was, he was here, or somebody was here in the last meeting. I'm saying that for him to participate, he can, he can attend, but he can't vote.
Yes, he can.
His name had to be on the agenda for that to happen.
Doesn't.
Okay, I challenge you. Can you, would you send me that? Would you be willing to send me that?
If you have the Texas Government Codes, open the meetings act. If there's no, no quorum.
Okay. See, it is 6:31 and we have a quorum. It's a calling meeting to order. We're going to start with the invocation and the pledge. Lord, you've entrusted us as stewards of the creation. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. We give you our business, our suppliers, and our constituents, and our workforce. May we be always mindful of their service. We confess that we are nothing without you and our trust is in you completely. We pray for safety and support of our first responders and military at home and abroad. Amen.
Our allegiance is to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I agree. Public comments? Does Erica have any other public comments yet? Um, first one is Courtney Cox.
How do I get ahead of you?
It's okay. It's all good.
Good evening. Um, oh, sorry. Courtney Cox, 71920 Lane. All that good stuff. Um, I don't have a whole lot. I, obviously, this is kind of like deja vu for the past, I don't know, six months or whatever. Um, same type of situation. We're dealing with a ratification. These are all approvals that you're talking about, and I'm number four. Um, approval to ratify the property tax increase. Approval for this LJA GIS mapping project. Approval for continued services of the Nixle thing, and then the Archive Social. Um, all three of which we were able to dig up after a lot of hard, and hard time. We were able to dig up, but the dates don't match on anything. There's been zero transparency on anything. Um, one appears to be an ongoing charge, then the other one appears to have been already approved in 2021. Um, that's would be the mapping project, which up until this last meeting that was having to be redone tonight, never heard of. Never heard of, don't understand what the necessity of it is. The map that we have right here in front of us is pretty much all we would need based on the zoning thing that's supposed to be coming up. And then on the Archive Social thing, it says that that has already commenced. It says that's, um, already been approved by somebody and already been, it started on 10/19. So I guess it would have technically been approved at the last meeting? I don't know. Anyway, the dates don't match, there's zero transparency. And my last final question is, as a city council, um, you guys are, um, my representatives, right? To the city that I live in. So you obviously know you're elected officials. However, I don't understand when it is then you are, first of all, you're supposed to have your information available to me, so I should be able to get ahold of you, I should be able to get ahold of you, and get ahold of you. On the city website, it has a, um, email address, I guess, that's available to you, but that does not seem to work, or at least it has not for me thus far. Um, I'm supposed to have, literally be able to contact you directly and say, why did you vote this way? What made you believe that this was the best for the city of Simonton and the people that reside in the city? Um, that is not available, or at least if it is, somebody needs to tell me where it's at, because it's not on your website at all. Um, that being said, all these LJA, the Nixle, the Archive, all that good stuff. Kelly, I mean, please don't take offense to this, but you're new. So is Mr. Elias, um, as just being appointed, um, less than a month ago, a couple of months ago, maybe. And I guess James has got a little bit longer than that, but in the same aspect, when were they educated on what these programs mean? When were they told, hey, this is why we think this is a great idea? This is why we think we're going to go ahead and spend this money? Um, and this is what they can go out and tell people, like, this is why we think it's a great idea? Because nobody has any, at any point, given anybody in the city of Simonton, to my knowledge, a reasoning behind why we're doing this mapping project. We're paying a lot of money over the course of the next, however long we want this to maintain itself, um, for a digital map that the county already provides. They already have it. They already have it. It literally says in their little thing that they're just going to go and pull it up from the county. So I just, I, again, we're going to hit on the transparency thing, but those questions are never answered.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
Erica, do you have any other public comment? Daniel Duncan.
Thank you, Erica. The Texas Open Meetings Act is perhaps the city's most important subject. We are here tonight because of multiple violations of the Texas Open Meetings Act can now cause the entire Act of 18th City Council meeting to be non-existent. So now all items have to be reconsidered, this time, before an act, before an actual quorum of council. Anyone that has attended even basic training of the Texas Open Meetings Act should have known better, especially anyone that has attended educational conferences on the city's behalf, including city council members. Transparency is another important subject for those in government. Consent agenda item is 4B, is approval to ratify the property tax increase, and it doesn't explain all of the reasons why this is necessary. At the last meeting, the city secretary, not the mayor, explained that the action had to be ratified because the city was supposed to adopt the budget before they adopted the rate. This is true. However, the city did the same thing in multiple prior years, including last year. Rate first, then the budget. Maybe the city should ratify those budgets as well. I continue to contend that the real reasons that you have to ratify the budgets also include, or the budget action also includes, the fact that the budget had not been posted within the 30-day statutory deadline, and it lacked a cover page advising the community as to the impacts of it required by law. The budget cover page, by the way, was unceremoniously added to the online version of the proposed budget the day after the meeting in which it was improperly adopted. The consent agenda has three other business items that should also be considered individually so that the public will fully understand what the items are about and why they are necessary. The mayor and her administrative staff, acting as a committee, certainly may recommend items to be considered by council. However, the law holds that when the council simply votes affirmatively on the recommendation of a committee, without considering the items, they are thereby rubber stamping the committee's recommendation. The law frowns on this. When the council disregards its authority and obligation to consider an item and does it in this way, the citizens' voice cannot be heard. Council agenda items V through E are more than just mundane, regular items. They deal with financial transactions, business items that should be considered thoroughly and openly prior to any vote, if for no other reason than to demonstrate to the public that you were aware of the costs and the benefits to the community. I once again request and even advise the council to consider the consent agenda items individually so that you can demonstrate true transparency to the citizens of Simonton.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have any other public comment? Anybody want to make comment that didn't have a chance to sign up? Item four, consider and take action on consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I don't like a motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Make sure we're not going too quickly that Thomas can't jump in. Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Agenda, consent agenda is passed. Moving on to new business. Consider and take action to appoint Sarah Jordan to the Keith Simonton Beautiful Board. Do we have a motion? A motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Item B, um, we have a guest tonight. Our city attorney is here to address council about the function and the authority of the designated planning commission.
So we just improved it all sudden and all sudden, talked to many on the phone, but it's going to be here in person, face-to-face, and meet some of the citizens, some of which I've had the ability to talk to over email. Um, so I think the general idea is, you know, you as the council have designated the planning commission, and what does that mean? What does that mean for, you know, land uses in the city? What does that mean for responsibilities you have to, you have to deal with? So I'm going to go over at just 8,000-foot level, and so if there's any specific questions you have, or if any citizens have any questions, just feel free to ask. Um, so, so generally, if there's, in a city, you have the ability to, to enforce land use controls. A lot of times that comes through zoning. You don't have zoning. So then the question would be, what kind of land use controls do you have as a city at, or at your disposal? Um, the primary one that you have, that every city has, that's required by state law, is subdivision, um, regulations. So subdivisions, have you ever heard the word platting, that kind of stuff? That's what subdivision is. And so the most basic form, it's taking a big chunk of land and making it smaller. And the state requires you to, to have a, there's a certain process to follow to understand what those, what those parcels are. And then, and primarily to understand, like, what you're, what's being dedicated to you from a, from a, from a landowner? So like water sewer easements, road easements, that kind of stuff, so right-of-way. And those are reflected in plats, and that's subdivisions. Um, but what a lot of cities do, especially if you don't have zoning, then you'll add some other requirements in the subdivision regulations that will require maybe some parkland dedication, which you do in your subdivision regulations. Um, and then maybe beef up some of the setback requirements for buildings, like how far they have to be back from, from, from a line, from a lot, lot line. Um, and some, some cities can do this where you distinguish, you don't get heavy into land uses, but you distinguish between maybe some, some intensity of uses. So if it's a, like, a heavy commercial-type use, you can require certain things for that, maybe the ability to set back a little farther than it would be, or to require maybe more, what they call screening, like vegetation to be on building lines, that kind of thing. Um, and then for residential uses, you can require some of those maybe to be a little bit more separate, and that's reflected in the plat. Um, if you had zoning, then you could be very specific about what you wanted to do, like, if, and you could call out certain land uses that could only be in certain places. Um, and then you as the planning commission, you know, being that board for that, could dictate where things could go and what could or couldn't go in place. Without zoning, you don't really have that, that much authority, but you can get there a little bit through, through some, through your subdivision regulations. And I was just scanning through your, your ordinances, and what's really good for you, whether you know you have this or not, there's, in the platting world, there's essentially two main kinds of, of plats. There's the standard one, which is really just focuses on what I would call just the land itself, the boundaries. And so that's where a surveyor or engineer, they'd be a little familiar with that. So you'd have, you know, your, your line, the big square of the property. Um, you're talking about what the land looks like. The second kind, though, which you had adopted, which is, is good, good for you, is that they're called development plats. And like the name implies, it's, it's really tailor-made for, for your kind of situation where instead of looking just at the land, you're looking at the development on the land. And that's really wide open. That, that part of the, that part of the government code is, is really wide open for you, and helps you to not only do the land part, but what the development is on it. And so it's really, and, and you're going to have a chance to go through and dig all, all the regulations you have, but you can start getting into what is actually going to be on the property. And it's, it gets close, but it's distinct from zoning and the fact that development plat, you're going to still look at the building on the property and what's being constructed there. And you can put some regulations on that to make sure it meets certain qualifications. The thing you won't be able to do is prohibit certain uses in certain places. That's what zoning does. So without that, you're, when it comes to the uses on the property, you're, you're going to have a lot of, not problem, but you're going to have a lot of restrictions on your ability to come in there and prohibit certain things or allow certain things. So use is not really the thing you're going to be dealing with. It's more of how land is developed, you know, through, through subdivision plats or development plats, what those structures on the property look like. And so that's the, that's the overarching thing that you have the authority to do as a planning commission. The rules that are really, really important for you to follow are what they call shot clock, is, is the term used by platting people. And it's, so the law requires when a subdivision plat or a development plat is, is delivered to you, it says when it's filed of record with you, then you have 30 days to act on that plat or it's deemed approved. And overarching understanding, because platting, especially the traditional sense, that the land division, the whole force of the law is that it's, it's not, you're not using that thing to prohibit development at all. It's more about recording what, what, how land is being used in the state. And so the idea is that you're going to approve those things, and it should be, it's not, it's not like an engine, you know, it's not like you're churning out all the approvals, but it, it should be geared to getting, to getting approval. That's what, that's what it's intended to do. That's why that, that time limit got shortened. That was a few legislative sessions ago, that, that shot clock time period got put on. Um, if you had a different setup, so some cities, what they'll do is they'll have a planning commission, or a planning and zoning commission, or maybe some kind of board setup. And the board would be, like, by statute or by, by ordinance would be the, the entity that looks at the plat first. That, then, why that's a good thing, and you don't have that here, I mean, you may, that's something you may think about doing. What that does is it actually gives you an extra 30 days, because the way the law is written, it's when it's filed of record, and then if you have a system where there's another board that looks at a plat, then 30 days for them to look at the plat, but then it's also additional 30 days for the governing body to approve it, unless another structure's there. So, I mean, I don't know if you have a problem getting people on, on commissions, but that might be something that you could think about doing, is creating a, a planning commission or a planning board that reviewed plats. And the only reason to do that wouldn't be, again, not to delay development. It just buys you a little bit of extra time in that, in that process, so you're not, by default, getting something approved that you, you had, that maybe is not conformist with your code, or that you had no intention of, of approving, but by default, because that shot clock wasn't met, that, you know, inadvertently passed something, that, that, otherwise you would have, you know, maybe warped out something with the developer. Um, so you have 30 days, that shot clock's 30 days were deemed approved. There's really three, when, when you get a plat before you, you have three options, and they are to approve it, just outright approve it. You approve it subject to conditions, or you can deny it. And if you deny a plat, then what's going to happen is that, and more than likely, the developer's going to demand immediately that you have a list of specific provisions that weren't met in your ordinance, that they're there as close as possible. So you provide that list to them, and they, and the law's written heavily in property owner and developer favor, which is, is a good thing. But for you all, the timing becomes real problematic, I think, because it's, it's, it's hard to respond to this. If you'll deny a plat, you could provide a list for that developer or property owner of what the issues are that you saw that, that justified your denial. They have an unlimited amount of time to go through and, and correct the plat and build up everything to, to match your letter. But when they resubmit it, you have 15 days from that point at when it's resubmitted to approve it or it's deemed approved. Again, the whole, the whole point is not, it's not you're trying to put roadblocks for development. You're trying to get land, you know, recorded and categorized and understand where things are getting dedicated. So there shouldn't be, you know, a big delay on your part, but then that's why the legislature built that in, because some cities were doing that, where they were using the platting process to put, you know, heavy burdens on developers or over, you know, over-regulate on that thing. And so they made that process a lot faster for, for the developer. It's such as something to be aware of, I think, as the planning commission, you, you know, and it's, you're also the council meeting the board that's proven it too, but the, just remember that, like, when something gets dropped off at City Hall, um, it can be deemed filed. And so, and I, you know, I don't know your process that well, but if you have, like, a, a pre-filing checklist or something like that, and what a lot of cities will do is they'll, they'll put that in place just so that it's not, because what you'll see sometimes, and developers will use that to their advantage, and they'll come in with a plat that they know is not, is not in conformance with your code, and they'll come in, like, at 4:15 on a Friday, and we'll drop it at your desk, and then they say, I filed it because I dropped it off, and you have no, no other rules set in place. And if that just happens, and this happens all the time, where it gets, maybe it's lost, or you just sit on it, and then where you have a hard time getting quorum, and then 30 days passes, and then the plat's approved, and, and for the developer side and for the city side, you've known that you would have corrected some of that stuff on that plat. Um, there are some developers that do that, again, most developers aren't that way, but some do that. And that's, and that's why I think cities have responded, and were kind of using that, that, that planning process, kind of pushing against developers, when the most, for the most case, most cities and most developers are fine. They work together, but that, that was probably driving that. So just be very careful about that when it comes in, it's, that'd be something you may want to look at just to see, like, what your, your actual process is for taking plats. Um, and then you can look at your development plat process too and see what, what it is you're requiring on development plats. And that's where I think you can, especially without zoning, you can, you can do a lot about, um, buildings and what kind of, you know, quality you want there. One thing that you need to know is that a couple, a couple sessions ago, the, um, and again, I've looked at your ordinance to see if it's in there or not, but there, but a lot of cities had facade requirements, so requiring buildings to be brick or, you know, a certain kind of metal or that kind of percentage. Well, let's just take that away, so you can't, as I said, you can't require any kind of facade improvement. You can't, you can't require that. So you can't, a lot of cities have, like, masonry requirements for especially residential areas. Can't do that anymore. So that you can't require any kind of by ordinance or rule, no kind of facade, you know, material. And that legislation that was passed, it was only, and not only about that, it was also about, um, your construction, um, materials. So you can't, if, if you've adopted, like, say, the, like, the International Building Code for 2012 or 18 or wherever you're at, um, if, if in the building code, like, say there's a, that gas pipe that would, you know, maybe is not the thing that you prefer, but it would satisfy the International Building Code, then you have to allow that, that kind of gas pipe. And what's, some cities were doing is they would, um, like, like a city I was in at the time, it, a really dry area, and they had a certain kind of gas pipe that was in there, that was in their code. You know, it was middle of the road as far as the building standard, I mean, it went, went the low end, but it wasn't extreme high in either, as, than, than was there in the middle. Well, because it was so dry, well, what happened is these companies, houses would get built. Um, and lightning was a problem, and we had, there was a college in the town, and there was a, um, a kid was visiting his friend, and he went to this house, sleeping on the bunk bed. Lightning hit the house, and somehow it got down to follow this pipe that was common in all these houses, and it found a weakness and blew up, and the kid ended up dying. So, and that had happened in several places over the, over the state with that, with that kind of, it wasn't just one type of manufactured pipe, but it was a few of them. And so this, this child's mom and father ended up conditioning a lot of cities to increase the standards for those types of pipes. And the city I was in did that, and they went real extreme on it. So they went to, like, the, the highest end on that pipe you could get, because they didn't want that stuff happening, which is understandable. But this legislation came through, and then what, what that would mean is that, that city's, you know, stance on that type of pipe, they, they couldn't allow that anymore. So it was just any kind of pipe that would meet, um, the minimum standards for your building, for your building, you know, cloying. So just remember that too, that you can't, I mean, for, for facade materials, and then for actually building materials, and that there's, there's things that you're limited to as a city, you can get to. But as long as you have adopted some kind of international building code, you have to expect that, that a developer will meet whatever the minimum standards are. And without zoning, you can't mess with uses on property, but you can sure, you know, talk about setbacks, block widths, that kind of stuff. Um, and then just one other thing, when you get to ETJ, subdivision regulations do extend to ETJ, but it's limited on what you can do. Um, a lot of times, what you'll see, well, not a lot, because the state law's written so that you're not trying to extend it to the ETJ zoning. Um, and you can't do that anyway, but what some cities have tried to do is they'll try to extend their subdivision regulations into ETJ or create new subdivision regulations for ETJ that essentially function as zoning without zoning being there. The state law will prohibit that, and so you're limited on what you can do in the ETJ. But, um, but for the most part, if you have, like, if, if the subdivision regulations are related to, to water sewer issues, especially drainage, and then street widths and street usage, then development standards related to those in the ETJ are, are generally upheld. Uh, but you can't mess with, I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't do it anyway because you don't have zoning, but you can't mess with uses in ETJ, and you can't mess with, like, like, uh, density of development, so like, like how big or small a structure has to be on a property, how high it can be. Um, you can't, can't mess with that in ETJ. So a lot of times what you're, what you're dealing with in ETJ, it really could be that you have, you know, all the development you'd like up to the city limit line, and technically someone could build something, they have a lot of freedom in ETJ to do whatever they want to. However, this is going to make this even more confusing, but it is confusing to everybody. You, we're, we're in an odd situation here because of the city of Houston, not just Harris County, but the city of Houston. So there's this loopy kind of thing in the state law where, um, it doesn't name Houston, but it says it's like a city with a population of like 3.5 million or more, which is going to be Houston. When, when their ETJ, the city of Houston's ETJ extends into your county, then that triggers for your county a dual approval for subdivision regulations in the ETJ. So for a developer, that gets burdensome, because then they're dealing with the county's regulations, and then if you're, you're ETJ, then you're subdivision regulations too. And what the law would say is that where there's a more stringent regulation than those that go acrosses, the more stringent one applies. So not all the time, but sometimes what you'll see is, like, say you have minimum, I don't know, like, 70-foot lots here, lot widths. They go into ETJ, well, maybe the county's then is only 50. Because yours is wider, then yours is the more stringent, so yours enough to apply. So that means that if you're going, when you have a plat, you know, to be approved in front of you, and you see a 70-foot, you know, a 50-foot wide lot, that doesn't meet your subdivision regulations. And so that developer would have to ask for a variance to, to get that thing to 70 or do something like that, which means we've got to take action on it. And that's where, that's where that 30-day shot clock comes in, because there's a really, you know, crunch time for them to submit it, to you to review it, to find out what's, what's in violation of that, and then for you, you know, to grant a variance, turn a lot, and all that kind of stuff. And so, um, and, and so you can thank city Houston for that, that it makes your, your, your approval process a lot more complicated than it would be for somebody else, but, um, but that's why, I mean, I'm assuming you have a city engineer, and the city engineer's probably all over that stuff, but just make sure that they're, they're keeping up with it, and that you're, you're seeing that, you know, when plats come in, that you're seeing that within 30 days, and you know, that system, which I'm sure is taken care of. So that's it for subdivision stuff.
I'm sorry, real quick question.
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'm sorry, I did not catch your name.
Justin.
Justin, um, basically, within the city of Simonton, the only thing that is not within an ETJ or already owned by Twin Woods is Valley Lodge, and a 94-acre property that is currently being, um, I guess, set up for some sort of concrete plant. We have yet to hear back from them, um, as we were supposed to 30 days ago. Um, why are we having this, this conversation when the only subdivision that is affected and/or only property available that is affected is literally already set up as a subdivision called Valley Lodge? It's the only one affected by what, by anything that came out of your mouth just a minute ago? Sorry. Um, of all of those, the, the other properties that are available are already in the ETJ and already owned by Twin Woods, which is not zonable, according to their agreement. So why are we, what are we planning? Are we, are we waiting on this concrete plant to show up?
I'll certainly let you answer it, since this question was directed to you, but this is an education for all of y'all and for council to know about what the responsibilities and what's allowable, what's not, to get started on knowing what we can and can't do, since the council will be the zoning board or zoning commission, if you will, until zoning's in place. Sorry, planning, not zoning. So we won't have zoning in place for a year or more. So this is, he's agreed to come and help us get started on education for everybody.
Okay, but that doesn't answer my question. Are we talking about Valley Lodge? Obviously, we're talking about Valley Lodge.
But any developer that would come and bring something, you could, we could be subject to using the rules or the laws that are applicable to that kind of thing. And Twinwood doesn't own everything that's in the city limit.
They don't own everything, but those that are...
So it's good to know.
If you can't do anything in the ETJ, I guess that was my question.
So, so the second part I wanted to get into is that if, I know that you're, I know that you have a lot of development agreements with Twinwood, and I haven't looked at those at all. I think they were done a few years ago, at least. Um, from what I understand, and this goes to what you're asking here, so my first answer to you is I was here at the request of council, so that, that, that's why I'm here, for no particular project. But looking forward, I mean, hearing that zoning's coming, you know, so it's, and just, everyone's quick, you don't, there's not, the only requirements for zoning, you don't have to, you don't have to be a home old city to do that, there's no, no specific thing. The main thing is you have to have a comprehensive plan, and the zoning is going to be based on a comprehensive plan, because the idea is that, you know, at some point, the citizens got together and, you know, had, had a dream for the city, and that the zoning, the land uses would reflect that, you know, reflect that vision for the city. And then over time, that, you know, as you have a map that's there, reflects those land uses, that thing will be altered over time as, you know, the city grows and, and changes. Um, and so I heard it mentioned in some, one of the public comments about a map. If you have, if the city has a, has a website, you're required to have a map of the city on it. And so that's a state law requirement, that's the minimum thing, and also ETJ map. And also ETJ map is supposed to be on the, on the website. A lot of cities don't have that, but that's, that's a basic requirement. And that's got to be, and if you have the ability to handle GIS systems, it's got to be a GIS map. So that's a state law requirement, just a low hanging thing. What's good about that for you is that in your ETJ, just maybe get to some of what we're talking about, thinking, thinking in the future is that, again, you can't do zoning in ETJ, even if it's coming, you, you can't zone anything in ETJ. But right now you do have the ability under, um, what they call development agreement. And there's two, two different kinds of development agreements. One's an in-city and there's an, there's an ETJ development agreement. I think the ETJ, it's essentially, I mean, the ETJ is, is development agreement is, is wide open. You can do essentially whatever you want to on that. The development agreement for inside the city is a lot more restricted. And so what, so if, you know, concrete plant or whatever it is, if there's some other development that came in, you had somebody that was right outside of the city limits, um, you know, it'd be your benefit to annex that property in. And of course that means the property owner, you start paying city taxes on things and, and, um, you know, depending on sales tax issue, what, what's going on, but primarily the, the property tax that you're paying that. And if it was, I mean, regardless of it's residential development or a big industrial thing or commercial warehouse, whatever, whatever it might be, um, you, as a development agreement, what that can do is it puts you and the property owner literally on this, on, on, on the same, on the same page, on the, on the same level. Um, up until this last legislative session, there was a little bit of leverage cities had and some, some cities again were bad actors in this and they entered these development agreements and then they would use their, their, they would like, uh, their sovereign immunity and they would back out of deals. Last legislative session, that, the, built into development agreements now for ETJ development agreements, you have to waive your sovereign immunity, which I mean, to me, that makes sense. If you're going to enter a deal, you're going to follow the deal. And so that's, that's built in. But what you can do in these development agreements is really, is just wide open. As long as you have the city and the property owner agree to, and literally what it says is, is lawful terms, you can do whatever you want. And so what cities will do through a development agreement a lot of times, and you'll see this through, big commercial developments will, they'll agree to be annexed through a development agreement. So you set the terms of annexation in the development agreement. But then what they're going to look for, and like in your situation where you have these multiple, you know, multiple levels of, of plat approval and different kind of regulations, you, you set them all in the development agreement itself, so there's only one set of regulations. And that helps, developers will, will love that because they're not, they're not having to go through question marks about different entities, who's going to approve them or not. You have one set, it's been approved by you, you have a deal that you can't back out of and it's, it runs with the land and so it's, it's set in stone. And that's why, to me, that, that's where development agreements can be really good. And so kind of to get to your question, that's what it'd be. Regardless of what the development is, the city does through a development agreement, the ETJ type of things, you have the ability to meet and work out something with, with property owner, that you're not, you know, buying behind, you know, having to hide behind some ordinance that you don't even agree with, but you have, you can set what you want, you know, and work out whatever the, the deal may need. Inside the city, you can do development agreements too, they're just limited on, on the scope. Um, so a lot of times what you'll see is, um, like if you have a commercial development come in and say that your, your capital improvement plan calls for like a sewer extension to go like one mile, but they're, but they're, you know, six hundred feet on the end of that, off the end of that line, so they're, they don't have access to the sewer. What you can do is the, the inside the city development agreement, you can, what's called, ask for like oversized improvements. So you can ask them, they're already there constructing their facility or whatever it is, you can ask them to connect to that line. And what you can do as a city through development agreements, without having to go through all the procurement process, they, you can refund them whatever the oversized portion of that, of that line was. Or whatever, whatever it is that you want to ask them to oversize, whatever that means, like road improvements, if they want, they need to build like a, I've seen cities do this where they build like a, uh, like a police station, like maybe they're building a very residential neighborhood and that would have a high demand on the police. So then you require them through a development agreement to build a police substation or something like that, so you have more access in that area to, to, to that, to the public safety. Um, so there are, there are some abilities to, you can even work around your own regulations and your, and your ordinance through development agreements in the city. But for the, for the big picture ones, like kind of what we're thinking about here when it comes to, you know, regulating, regulating land uses and that kind of stuff, development agreements in ETJ are an easy way to do that. So if it ever comes to you that, I mean, that, I know that Twinwood's got a lot of stuff here, but, and they're under actual development agreements now, that's how, that's how their, their stuff got set up. When those roll out and those are done, um, that some of that land is coming into you and it's going to be in their city limits. And so you're going to be thinking about, you know, and then the, your ETJ is going to be adjusted because of that. And so you're going to be thinking about some of those kinds of deals and what, looking down the future, what that means for land uses that are now in your ETJ or, or are going to be at some point. And so you can structure, you know, your, your planning of your city now to counter those things later. And so, um, that's just like a big picture of, of what you can do now for that. And so I know that's, that's a lot, but the main thing is as a planning commission, right now you're responsible for plaits and you're, you have the traditional and the development plaits. And so you may want to be looking in your development plat process and maybe beat that up because through development plat you can get, if you're not getting zoning, you're not talking about land uses, but you can, you can really get into quality of, of, of construction, whereas you do development process, you can get that, whereas through regular plating process, you can't. Without zoning, you're, you're kind of stuck. And so if that's what you're looking at to do, like quality of development, the development plat process is where you want to go.
May I ask a question? Just for clarity. Um, I understood that the annexation laws have changed. Have, have they reverted in some way where Simonton has the authority to annex?
So, so, so there's two, um, so the answer is no, but there's two different ways to annex. There's the tradition, the annexation laws, you're correct, got, I mean, from, from a city's perspective, if you were pro-annexation from a city, that, that perspective would be that those annexation laws got gutted and that they really did. That you're extremely, extremely limited on what you can annex and that would be the kind of annexation that, um, that was called like unilateral annexation or involuntary, where the city, you create just like an annexation plan and you essentially initiate an, uh, initiative to annex property. You can't do that anymore. I mean, extremely limited option to do that. That's what I call chapter forty-three of Old Government Code, has that, has that, that's been gutted. But this two twelve, chapter two twelve of Old Government Code is deal all with plating and land use issues. And in there is where this development agreement process is and you can annex through a development agreement and it's, but again, the caveat there is the city's not coming in as this, you know, this power force taking land. It's, it puts this property owner and the city on the same page. You're actually just making a deal. And, um, and so, so that's always been there. It's just the one, it hasn't ever been touched by the legislature until this last legislative session when they emphasized that you, you have to waive your sovereign immunity when it comes to, um, comes to making those kinds of deals. So you can't back out of it and leave developer hanging on some...
Is the waiver of sovereign immunity retroactive?
To existing development agreements? I don't know if that, I, I, I wouldn't think so, but it could be. I don't think the law's written that way, but it, it could be the intent of it, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
So Justin, you and I talked about it briefly and to Courtney's question about the situation where we have this business coming into potentially and it's in the city limits. Do you want to give council any...
Yeah, so there's a, you do have some abilities. This is, so there's, there's some existing law for type A general law cities that deals with, that you don't, you're not zoning, but what can you do when you have businesses that's, that you don't want? So there's, I mean, again, this is older law, but a governing body has this, I'm going to read it from the statute here, this is two fifteen of Old Government Code. So you can, a governing body may direct the location of a business and you can direct the location of manufacturing establishments. So when you hear they're coming in, you have the authority as a, as a type A body to direct where those things are going in the city and again, the idea is the health and safety of the people around them. And so again, this is a comprehensive list of things. I mean, I think cement, from what I understand, it's cement factory or something like that. Like that, that would fall in here. I mean, the, some of the uses listed are like tanneries, slaughterhouses, other noxious kind of uses, I mean, cement thing could fall into that. Um, but that same provision, um, so this is the statute language, within the limits of the municipality, governing body may restrain, abate, prohibit, direct, location of or regulate the management or construction of any establishment or place at which any nauseous, offensive or wholesome business may be conducted. So it's pretty broad. And the idea is that, so that you're not, you're not just completely, you know, hamstrung when it comes in to, there's somebody that wants to come and try to, you know, force, because you don't have zoning, that they think, that they can come in and put something in place that's going to harm, harm your city. And so you do have some authority to direct where that, those businesses go. That doesn't mean they're not going to fight back if you try to do that, but, but you do have some statutory authority to, to, to put some regulation in place or work with the property owner, the business owner to direct where they're going to go. Um, in this case, I mean, I could, you know, if, if, if this is really one of those things where they're coming to city limits and they're set on it, you could theoretically work out something where they, you, maybe they went to the ETJ and then through a development agreement, again, you could, you know, help them out with relocation and get them set up and then, and then through that development agreement or even if, if it's inside the city limits, through, it's under, under the statutory provision, direct maybe what kind of, uh, safety protocols or, you know, protections need to be built up, screening, noise reduction and that kind of stuff, um, you know, dust abatement, whatever it might be that, that comes along, that kind of use. But you're not, without zoning, I mean, it's, it's hard to get there, but you have a few things you can do and this is a pretty strong one as is development agreement. So there's, there's things you can do. It's going to take you working with the property owner and, and the, the business owner to figure out what it is that they're going to be doing and then what the effect is going to be on the citizen. So you can just start building into, into that agreement or whatever it's going to be, um, to protect those things that, that might be harmful.
Question, just to clarify, layman's terms. Hypothetically, we have all, we have been fighting for months now, um, this concrete plant, um, coming into our neighborhood, literally. Um, from what I just heard you go through in this last so many minutes or whatever, um, if the TCEQ is to grant their permit and they are to move forward with, um, this concrete plant, they would then have to supply the city or, or file with the city some sort of plat, correct?
If they're...
Of development.
It, well, yeah, if, and again, that's what depends on, on how we're doing. If they're not replating the property...
They have to. I mean, it's, it's concrete. They have to bring in, um, all kinds of water tanks and, um, you mentioned tanneries are listed on there. It's because the concrete plants and tanneries and slaughterhouses even use the same chemicals. So, and we're all in a floodplain and just all this other stuff. So they would have to replat in order just to retain their own aggregates and, and concrete needs to make the concrete to begin with. But from what I heard, they would have to prevent something to the city and then what you just read says the city, this council, has the ability to say, sorry, Jack, go somewhere else.
Yeah.
Thanks. That's what I needed to hear. Appreciate it.
And just for clarity, the, and why this is specific on this stuff, about the traditional type plating and the development plaits, more than likely, and I haven't dug through the city's development plat process, it would be a development plat they would be coming in with unless they're adjusting the boundaries of their lot. So if there's an existing lot, say it's one acre square or something like that and they're putting on there and they don't need to adjust the boundaries of the lot, then that, the traditional type of plat wouldn't apply. And that's where a lot of cities get, get, especially without zoning, if, if there's nothing that needs to be adjusted on the lot and all the dedications are already there and you have no zoning, then it's no uses of, you can't touch uses, they could just come in and draw, and drop the thing. For development plaits, so that's where you're talking about the actual structures. And so depending on how, how beefed up your, your development plat process is, that's where you're going to want to see what's the development plat, because you have the ability to withhold permits, you know, until development plaits, all the requirements are met. And so that, that's where, that's where the regulation would come in. And so, um, but yeah, for sure, if it's, they're adjusting land boundary at all, replat and, and, and there's regulations that apply there, especially the development plat, depending on how, what you have set up in your ordinances, that's where you can really make sure that they're meeting certain requirements before any kind of permits issued. And on top of all that is this other provision that allows you as a council to direct where they go. And so, I mean, you do have some, you do have some authority to do with specific kind of uses. Here, I mean, that, this is, again, you, you heard the, the structure of it. It's about kind of noxious types of uses, which I think a construction plant next to residential neighborhood could, could definitely fit that. And that would definitely be what, what we want to, want to see if they're going to try to force their way or TCEQ. And here's the thing too, that's, and then TCEQ might, if, if they issue the permit, they might do that, I, I don't know. But I have seen mistakes that TCEQ has made on some applications where they grant, not after this kind of thing, but like to, like the utility districts, municipal utility districts, where they branded those things and authorized those things over a city's objection and come to find out that what TCEQ has approved wasn't what was actually put in place. And so I'm just saying that there, there's mistakes can be made at TCEQ, maybe, maybe not intentionally, and I doubt it's intentional, but it's just, it's a big organization. And so I'm saying is your, if it comes down to you're going to use your ability to direct where they go, that means that you're going to be dealing with TCEQ approval more than likely and it's going to be, you know, the city versus TCEQ versus the property owner and that, that could be a big fight. So if we can catch that stuff on the, more of the front end and work with the, the developer, understand what it is, we're, we're actually going to be addressing, that's, it helps, it's helpful to get that stuff kind of cleared up on the front end. So they know and we know what is, we're going to expect is going to be on the ground.
Thank you so much, Justin. Anybody else have questions?
No, that's a gentleman's knowledge, thank you.
Thank you so much, Justin. I appreciate that. Learned a lot and glad to meet you in person.
Yeah.
Okay. That is the end of our new business. Moving on to reports. Uh, I don't have a report specifically, but I do want to just clarify or put it out there just in case there are questions. We've had some social media accusations about burying items in consent agenda. Just making sure everybody realizes that using a consent agenda is a very typical thing to do. Um, we've used them in the city of Simonton farther back than I really remember. I know that in twenty sixteen we were using that and would put items like, um, financials, pay bills, even a quarterly financial report, things like that. If the council has done their homework, which, you know, part of their responsibility as council members is to be, uh, updated or read the material or ask questions and do